Parents in the community is to equip students with the skills necessary to be lifelong productive citizens in an ever-changing global society.
Our strategic planning committee for the district, this is what they came up with and approved by the board. So we're hoping to see this new one when we start using this. Motion to set the, let's see, there's one thing, 5D is going to be tabled and 5D. Keep that one on. So 5D will be tabled at this point because I think understand that we don't have the information. Do I hear a motion to set the meeting agenda? Phillip first.
Second.
Tyler second. Vote Lisa.
Yes.
Phillip.
Yes.
Jen.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Now I understand we have recognitions.
Correct.
The best part.
Occasionally, we're going to be doing some recognitions at our working meetings, especially when we have some groups, teams, what have you. So Crab Orchard will be recognizing one of their teams. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Evans.
Recross America Week is this week and we have pajama day and that's what you get allegedly, yes. Affectionately known as the nerd club. That's what I call them. And I can do that because I am one. I competed as, as, as an academic team member as a student. We're really proud of their accomplishments and I wanted to recognize them here. They're a little more classy than, than I am. They changed out their PJs and got their team shirts on. Speaking of class, they just, they handled themselves as class throughout the, the district and the regional governors competitions. They are coached by Ms. Cole Isaacs, Ms. Rita Hampton, and Ms. Amy Shackelford. And I want to give them a round of applause. And so our, our students competed. They, they won the district overall championship and they were the region third place winners and the quick recall runners-up at region. That was at Somerset this past weekend. Competed well, who's fell short. So I'm gonna call them out and if you guys will just come up and stand, we'll just line the front right here real quick and recognize you and I'll call out whatever place you were in the other competitions. Okay? So Everett Stevens placed first in math in district, first in quick recall. Taylor Hale was fifth place in science and first place with recall. Noah Johnson, first place in science at the district level, first place with recall. Noah Carrier placed second in social studies at the district level, first place with recall. Lake Adams was first place in social studies at the district level, first place with recall. Place four in social studies at the region level. Addie Hendrickson placed third in language arts at the district level, first place with recall. Levi Isaacs was first in language arts at the district level, first place in future problem solving, first place with recall. At region, he placed second in language arts. Again, we were quick recall runner-up in region. Willa Boswell was third place written composition at district and she placed second at region written composition. Riley Hampton, first place future problem solving. Everly Stevens was a first place with recall and overall district champion. Ben Durham, first place with recall at the district level, overall champion. Evelyn Abey. Chloe Smallwood, first place future problem solving, first place with recall, overall champion. And then we also have Hannah Hale, Mason Vergara, Ollie Hawke and Fallon Boswell, who were a part of the overall championship at the district level. So this is our, our academic team that we are extremely proud of. I want us to take a moment and recognize their accomplishments. That's nice to meet. Thank you.
Brad, you want to take a picture back above the screen?
I don't think there'll be room.
I got to be room.
Yep.
Thank you. All right.
The board will thank you for your break. And you're welcome to stay.
All right, we're going to be doing our afternoon starts tonight. For A, schematics for Lincoln County High School renovation, Jason Mary.
Yeah, I guess.
That's all right.
I guess we're, yeah, we're just, we're asking for approval, board approval for schematic plans for that phase of the, of developing the project there at the high school. You guys should have had those plans in your, in your packets.
Yes.
Or PDFs. I have some smaller, some small copies. If anybody wants any of these tonight, they're not very large and probably easier to look at on the screen. But if anybody has any questions, anything. Yes, and, and I know Brad and I have been working this week trying to figure out the part, the overall project. There were a lot of things we were trying to put together. Some of the things with the high school, there was some work at Waynesburg. There was work to be done over here at the board office area. So we actually ended up after Brad speaking to the finance people, or people at KDE about breaking the project into three projects now, so that that makes better sense in the way the record keeping and the bookkeeping is done. Makes it more officially. So the first project is at the high school, which we will actually break into two bid packages. One for all the interior work and one for the exterior components of that. So you'll see a second bid later after we do this one. Pretty quickly after, but we wanted to break it. And so it makes better sense for contractors bidding on those things.
I was asking Bruce about the plan. I think is that, I love that, what is it, for asshole four, like
Yeah.
All the corridor.
It's very expensive.
I know. It's very expensive. I just wondered what the extra cost would be if it started at the front door and went all the way back to the left of the new connected.
We could, we could look at bid as an alternate.
I think that would be really impressive.
You all could, you know, we could come in and save it as a four board.
Just for that main stretch back to the cafeteria.
From the front door back to the corridor.
We're, we're, we're open for possibilities.
I don't know. This was just my opinion.
It'd be nice to see what, what the price is.
Yeah, we can, we can do that. I mean, I can't tell you off the top of my head right now, but I can.
I was asking Bruce.
Yeah. No, we can. I'm certainly willing to entertain that and, and check it for you.
Of course, you probably noticed that the funding source for is our seven million that we already see. So I just want to make sure I understand. So the way the listing is, is bid package one, bid, bid package two, bid package three, and then price contract work. So each one of those is going to be a separate phase?
Well, did what, you know, what we sent you initially as bid package one and two is now the first project with its own BG number. Brad has submitted every, has broken out now what was listed as bid package three is now a separate project, which is which is the, the potential maintenance building to go here. And then the third project is the repair of the roof at Waynesburg, which is listed as
If you look in your
I can't even remember the word.
BG one is the high school renovation. Then is the maintenance and the, the Waynesburg.
So the simple way to think of it is, if we're doing work on three different properties.
Exactly.
So after talking to KDE, that will require three different BGs. So one BG, the first BG you have on your list should be Lincoln County renovations and field, sports fields. Then there'll be another BG one for the Waynesburg roof repairs. And then the third BG one will be for a, a potential maintenance facility. Once we sell Somerset Street. Our goal is to use those proceeds to put something else together for maintenance because we're going to need something else. Within the scope of this work, there will be some other things Christine, like you mentioned that in my mind, I want to bid as an alternate, just because it's on this list initially, especially some of the outside work and different things like that. We may get a number in and be like, nah, we can do something a little bit different than what we have in mind here. But that just gives us the freedom. If we include it all upfront, we'll have the freedom to go ahead and do that. When you bid something as an alternate, you don't like the number, you just don't take that alternate. You don't do that work. So we can look at other things like that. But Phillip, to get back to yours, once I talk to KDE, that's the proper way to do it since it's different properties, even though we're using the same. We're all thinking of it as we're using the House Bill one money, the legislative money. But the way they look at it, they're a little more interested in property. So that's the reason we, we broke into three.
Does it, does that affect the timeline of when they're going to get done?
No, it actually will probably help a little bit because with the I'm actually already starting to schedule things with the roofers. We can kind of jump ahead and get to that quicker so we can address Waynesburg. And I think it's a good time too to update you all. We've already been doing some minor work with this House Bill one money. We actually got roofers coming to Highland next week to do some work there. On spring break, we're working on a leak issue at the middle school and using this funding for that too. And we also, when we did the floor repairs due to the fire damage at the middle school, we went ahead and did the second floor and used some of the funds there. So we've been able to do some great things already. This is just the more of the larger scale work, a little bit more detail needed. And that's why, you know, we need Jason to help to get a lot of it done. But the, the main reason he wanted to break it into, or we did, put it into, take the high school for example, making that two bid back. Because our thinking is if we can get the interior renovations after bid in the next few weeks, as soon as school's out, we can get started on that. That's probably our biggest concern is having the whole summer, which the late start will help. The outside work we're going to do there with the fields, that can go on through the fall and early winter while we still have good weather. So putting that in two phases really helps. The roof will be done. I'll probably schedule it at this point when school lets out, just so it's not impacting school traffic and stuff, the Waynesburg roof. And then the building will be the last because we got quite a bit of things we need to do to get to the point where we're ready to do that. But it's better to go ahead and get the BG ones approved. And we can always revise those, it's no big deal. We can do those at any meeting. But that's kind of our thinking in putting this all together because it's such a large scope of work that kind of touches so many different areas.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion to approve the schematic plans and BG one for the Lincoln County High School sports field renovation project? BG one for the Waynesburg elementary roof repair and the BG one for the district maintenance building. Lisa made motion, second. But Jen, vote Lisa.
Yes.
Phillip?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you, Jason. And Brad. For B, revised BG one for the Kings Mountain Elementary Project.
So this is just the to get, this is good. We were just talking about BG ones. So the Kings Mountain project had an initial BG one. And when we approved that change order to do the abatement work, that changes the BG one, the, the language in it. So really, this is just a formality, a formal approval that we probably could have done at the last meeting, but I still kind of learned some of those processes too. So this will just reflect our change order and change the total, the total scope of the project and the price. Once we approve it, we'll send it into KDE. That's all we need.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion to approve the revised BG ones of the Kings Mountain Elementary Devolution Project? Tyler, second.
Second.
Phillip, vote Lisa, yes. Phillip?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Excuse me. For C, contracts for additional case managers. Julie?
Case managers in the schools have a restricted number of students that they can carry on their caseload. And currently, we have several schools where the teachers are at their maximum capacity. So I'm just asking for an approval with the contract amendment for pro care therapy to provide one in-person case manager and one virtual case manager for the remainder of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Approximately fifty-six thousand dollars total for both of them. And that would be without DEA things.
This is just through the end of the year.
Yes.
Any questions?
Are your, I know later on you're asking, you have another line for discussion about next year's personnel.
Yes.
Will those positions take care of some of this?
Yes. That is the hope, is that we can not have to do the contracts and go through agencies that have the right amount of staff.
Because you're going to be busy trying to sustain everything.
Yes.
All of your process there.
Any other questions, discussion? Do I hear a motion to approve the contract addendums with pro care therapy for case managers through the end of the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year? Jen, second. Lisa, vote Lisa, yes. Phillip?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thanks, Julie. For D, revised twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school calendar. Anthony. Is this not getting old?
I'm back again.
Surely for the last time.
As you know, we've had four more snow days and therefore will require to adjust the school calendar. May the twentieth will now be a school day. May the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth will be school days and May the twenty-ninth will be the last day for students. May the thirtieth would be a staff work day. June, the second and third would also be staff work days. June the fourth would be our closing day and June the fifth would be our required makeup day.
Any questions?
So the last day kids are in, it would be May twenty-ninth.
May the twenty-ninth.
Okay.
Mr. Beeler, are you sure this is the last time? Parents are starting to call, ask for your phone number.
That's right.
Seventy degrees tomorrow, twenty-two degrees in the next.
That's right. We need to have a flood.
If we have a flood now, your own record is happening.
Do I hear a motion to approve the revised twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school calendar? Lisa?
Second.
Phillip, second. Vote Lisa, yes. Phillip?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you, Anthony. Okay, we'll move into our discussion items. Five A, new phones on this provider, Tracy.
I've been searching for most of the year for a resolution to our phones problems. We've had lots of issues with AT&amp;T this year with Waynesburg, Crab Orchard specifically are the worst, and then Highland. Anytime it rains, the phones don't work. Parents can't call. One person might be able to hear on one end and not the other. So I've searched lots of companies. But the one I have come down to is Zoom phone and it's an all internet-based phone system. Currently, we are paying AT&amp;T in Waynesburg, from Waynesburg, everybody except for Houstonville and Waynesburg are AT&amp;T. Those two are win streak. And we are paying from ten to twelve thousand dollars minimum per month for phone service. And AT&amp;T has already sent us notice that it's going up at least fourteen hundred dollars. So with the new system, if we can go with this, this is why I have to bring it forward to the board. It would be a contract, a Zoom, a yearly contract. We would pay twenty-four thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars per year for all, for all schools.
Wow.
Yes.
That's huge.
It's huge. Huge savings for the district. Over a hundred thousand dollars every year. And it would cost us thirty-one thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars for devices upfront to implement. That we could keep the devices at the middle school and Stanford because they have the newest phone systems, those will work, but everybody else, we would have to replace their handsets. So it's just a significant savings. And with that, we would also get twenty Zoom room licenses. That means we could record meetings, all of our trainings. So every school would have at least one Zoom license, probably two. So that's a huge benefit as well. And then that keeps our district single sign-on as well for our teachers. With this system, they can not only have a handset, I've got a demo account and it goes straight to my cell phone. And we can text parents. There's always a record of everything that happens. So it'll save every text message. It'll save every voicemail, which is really good for our liability issues as well. So you can use it on your desktop computer. You can use it on your laptop with a Zoom app. You can use it on your cell phone. Or you can, if you're having a teacher that's not tech savvy, they could just use their handsets at your desk.
Would you talk to anyone else that's using, that's currently using this?
Um, Disney uses it. Toyota. Toyota uses it in Georgetown. The Kentucky Office of Technology, the Commonwealth Office of Technology has gone to this. East Burnside schools are going to this meeting. East Burnside and us will be the first two individual school systems. The Commonwealth of Technology of Kentucky has already started implementation this school, this year. And they have forty-three thousand phone numbers. So.
So right now, we have a traditional line, phone line, and this will be internet-based. And it's the same Zoom, I guess, that we all use during
It is the same Zoom, yes. And we are getting this price because the Commonwealth Office of Technology, because of their deal. So they're giving schools the same price that they negotiated for the Commonwealth of Technology.
Do we have to pay anything to get out of AT&amp;T?
It's just phone service. So as long as we get notice and cancel, yes.
Consider the notice given.
Any question?
Our, our internet, of course, at all the schools, that we haven't had any issues with, like it going down.
No, it's fiber.
Since it is internet based.
Yes, it is fiber.
Any questions? Evidently not. That's good.
See you next week.
We'll be back.
Five B, need for additional special education positions, Julie.
All right. And due to an increase in students, we're going to need some more teachers to fill those. At the middle school, right now, they have seven learning behavior disorder allocations and one moderate disability allocation. It looks like as of last week, when I pulled numbers, we're going to have sixty-six more special education students that will transition from the elementary to the middle school. And there's a need for more physicians that would increase four more LBD physicians and one more MSG physician. So a total of eleven LBD teachers and two MSG teachers. And this is based on a ratio, trying to give us some wiggle room with those caseload numbers. In sixth grade, we planned thirteen students to one case manager. They can go up to fifteen. And then seventh and eighth grade, we did seventeen students to one case manager and they can go up to twenty. So that will give us a little wiggle room there. Similarly, at the Lincoln County High School, we'll need one additional LBD allocation to be the increase of students that are transitioning from the middle school into the high school. And then again, that's at the seventeen to one ratio. And then at Stanford, we need a half of LBD allocation to cover an increase of students and that's at thirteen to one. So I'm just going to ask that you approve that.
MSG or ten to, or the cap is ten, right?
Ten is the cap for the MSG classroom.
Is your IDEA budget going to accommodate?
It will.
It's going to be interesting.
It, it will be interesting and then that's a big increase. So.
Sixty-six students coming in, that's, that's a lot.
Well, yeah, we, I was shocked with that. I think when I shared it with Mr. Thursday, he was rather shocked with that as well. So, uh, yeah, that was a big surprise. So I, I think I'm one of his favorites now.
That's right. That's right. I'm excited about the possibility with additional staff.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's the tough thing is, is with the special ed law, it's not, you know, you have to have the teachers. Those caps are what they are.
They are. You're right.
And you will notice, we're also going to ask board to kind of do what we did with the assistance a few months ago. So that we're not kind of waiting, having to wait for a board meeting to come. So with the requirement that we have to ask that you allow us to abandon those positions.
Use your discretion. Any questions?
The next one's mine too.
Oh, okay. Student in need of a shortened school day.
I have one student with medically necessary doctor's statement and it's four and a half a day every other week. Looking for a partial school day.
Any questions? Thank you, Julie. And we go to five E, appointment with Equus Sports Force Services, Kim.
So last month, we were seeking approval for the master agreement with Equus. Mr. Chandler expressed concerns regarding a statement in the background check to reflect the KRS that she needs to speak on that.
They're, the contract, they agreed to do background checks, but it was unclear as to whether they were acknowledging the background check section that actually applies to school districts for employees, for volunteers, for visitors, or contractors. So we asked them to change it to specifically acknowledge that statute that also requires the child abuse and neglect registry check. And they, the response they gave us is not real reassurance. So I still need to try to work with them on that. They basically said they would screen based on our standards, but they would not agree to change the contract to specifically acknowledge the statute that we're covered by. And that gives me pause as to why are they not willing for the actual statute to be referenced in the contract. So that if, if we can clean up that piece by next week, if we can get them to commit to what they mean by they'll screen based on our standards, then that will probably be up for your approval next week. If they won't agree to that, then we may just have to abandon this project.
Any questions? Kim, five F, family partnership waiver.
So currently, we're seeking approval for the family partnership waiver requested by, it starts to meet the regulations. When they re-advised the program standards, this has been added as thirteen oh two point five two, stating that we must maintain a ratio of forty to one. So we are asked to commission to have a waiver for that so that we, our goal is to be at fifty-five to one that our funding will allow us to meet their regulations in the states that we can ask for a waiver. Currently, your ratios are eighty to one, potentially at the maximum. So we're, we're planning to have a fourth liaison to light in that workload, but it will, it won't reach the
Any questions? Five G, the early tablet continuation application.
So our program is seeking approval to apply for the continuation grant in the amount of two million five hundred seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars from the twenty-five, twenty-sixth year. We're seeking approval for our application and budget. Integrated school readiness plan with program goals, the technical and training, uh, training and technical assistance plan and the strategic plan. And there has not been any significant, significant changes from the previous year. So.
Any questions? Any questions? I do agree with that. That looks good. If that is real short. Five H, grant procedure zero nine point four three five, five P, four two three expulsion.
Yes, I'm asking the board to, to do this expulsion notice and do our procedures after discussing with grants. So anytime we have an expulsion hearing, this would be the notice that the family would receive from the board. And it is a KSQA.
Any questions? All right. Five I, committed to address bullying. Phillip?
So after going around and speaking to almost all of the principals, I haven't gotten quite to everybody, but all the, all of the principals have their own little ways of documenting how bullying is documented in their schools. Most of them are just notebooks or Excel spreadsheets that they're keeping locally, but nothing is standardized, standardized between all the schools. And then it doesn't really follow the student. And most of the principals agree that there needs to be a way that we can document all the reports of And most of the principals agree that there needs to be a way that we can document all the reports of bullying and how it's investigated, and then how it's reported to the parents if, if it's deemed necessary, so. Uh, I kind of want to get this committee together, so we can sit down and figure out a way that works best for all the schools, and get a procedure together that works for everyone. And I'd like to volunteer to be on that committee, and we can get it together and get something going well for the district.
Couple things that I'd say, this is the first time I've ever, in all the years I've been in school, that one of the board members asked to have something put on, on the agenda, and I think, I'm gonna ask Tyler to tell us about the committee that we already have in place. And he's, he's representing the board on this.
I sent, I replied with, yesterday to your email, and I know it was late, so you may not have seen it. You, actually, I think the one meeting you missed was when Neil I was here to speak about some racial incidents. And we put together a committee, and we've met once, and we actually changed the name to Advisory Committee, right? Diana, it's District Advisory Committee, and we actually are taking, that, that is part of the scope of that committee. And that's, actually, we had a long conversation about bullying and the, and the mechanisms of tracking, and of course, it goes into Infinite Campus everywhere. But bullying is different, because, you know, when we put something in IC, and I've done my fair share of IC write-ups. There's a, I don't know how many codes there are that you choose, and of course, you choose it for that incident, right? It could be a fight that day, and then over time, turn into bullying. And so we had that conversation about how do we create a mechanism where we're seeing if, if it is continuing. And actually, when we changed the name of that committee, District Behavior Committee and I think District Bullying Committee were, were thrown out there as possible names. So we're, we're actually doing this, we just, literally just started. And it is, our next meeting, let me check, is March twenty-sixth, and I believe Diana is bringing the data, right, where, of course, we can't look at names. But we're looking at numbers of some of these behavior things that we're seeing. So, and let's see, I don't know how many people, it's a pretty good sized committee, and then we're adding a youth service person to it, we're adding a minority staff member to it. And the special education director to that committee. And so, I mean, I think you've got a great idea. I think what, Mike, what you might should do is, is join us on the twenty-sixth, see what we're doing, compare it, and then, because it's, it sounds like we're, what you're wanting is, is what we just started doing, so.
So I think maybe, so I don't disagree, Ben. Maybe we just need to find a better way to advertise what you're doing, then, because I wasn't aware that was going on.
It was literally the one, I think, the one meeting.
Well, I remember when Neil I had asked for a, a racial diversity committee. I didn't realize you guys had broadened it. I hadn't heard, I hadn't heard any meetings announced.
Yeah, we had one, and it was kind of, it was more of a planning of, let's wrap our heads around it. So twenty-sixth is the next one, so it's four thirty here at the board office. So if I were you, I might say, hey, let's table this and then see what we're doing, add to what we're doing. And then go forward, because what you're, what you're saying is right, it needs to be standard, and we talked about that, that there needs to be uniformity, there needs to be a track, tracking process, and what was the other thing? Oh, oh, and the, looking at the policy around the language about it, because there is, there, it's, it's a little gray, it's a little gray. So those things are happening, but it is, it is new.
Is the meeting open to the public?
I think they're, you know, they're all, any of our meetings are open, right?
I will tell you something, I also had Tracy to go through our last principal meeting, go through the Infinite Campus data standards on entering behavior, because those are set upstate. And bullying is one of those things that has to be entered, along with a whole list of other things and resolutions added to it. And so she went through that with the principal, the last principal meeting, and gave a copy of the data standards, so. I know we, one of the things we're gonna be looking at, at the March twenty-sixth are the handbooks from the schools and also the district. I'm trying to think of some of the other things. Diana's pulling together some data from Infinite Campus that Mr. Craig, I think, has something.
Yes, sir?
And maybe the dominant score of the comments probably needs to be made at that meeting. But I think the biggest thing that needs to be communicated is what bullying is. Every misbehavior is not bullying.
That's correct.
Somebody gets mistreated, that's not bullying. Kid does something wrong, that's not bullying. It needs to be dealt with, but we throw that word around very, it's just, we throw it at everything. And I think that's something we need to really educate as much as possible, our community on, that, you know, if a kid does something that they shouldn't do to another child. Yes, we can't have that, we have to correct that, we have to teach them what they shouldn't do and why that's wrong. That's not bullying necessarily.
We had that conversation at the, at the meeting about making sure everyone knows at what point does it turn into bullying.
Right, right. It's gotta be repetitive.
Right, yeah, there is a timeframe.
Yeah, and that catches all the things that we're discussing, it could be because of gender, it could be because of race, it could be because, I just don't like the way you look, whatever, I mean, you know, and then all that comes into play. But I just hear that word thrown around so much that it's not always used appropriately.
I just confirm with Mr. Chandler that when the regulation first came out, bullying was never mentioned whatsoever, it was harassment, but he just told me there's, like, been a definition added in some areas about that, so. So yes, we're, we are gonna be looking at other things, you know, along with the race issues that were brought to the team to go forward. And we shared in Mike, Mr. McGuffey said we added three other votes. We have high school representation, middle school representation, elementary, district votes. Who's gonna be?
I did want to also say that, like, one of the things we discussed is our principals do enter those in Infinite Campus. It just may not be as easy to track down specific details, like, there's not a data standard for a racial slur. But there is a data standard for harassment or bullying, though it's ultimately up to the principal, but those are entered in the finishing of this.
Sometimes more than one category would fit the same behavior, so what one principal might call bullying, another one might call harassment, another one might call, you know, fight.
Right.
Even though it was provoke, whatever, the different principals might enter, look at the same behavior and decide a different category. One of the hardest things that I see dealing with that from a behavior standpoint is you all correctly have been taught, leave other kids' names out of a kid's record. But the problem ends up being, you read, start reading through behavior detail report, it will be student A did this to student B, and then student C did this, and there's nothing within the system that connects who those kids are. So then the next year, a new assistant principal is reviewing that kid's behavior detail report, they have no idea who student A, student B, student C were, they don't know that there's an ongoing conflict. So there's not a way to track that, there's, there's not a good web to figure out, oh, this is a repeat offense with the same victim. Unless somebody just already has that as part of their knowledge, and that's a real frustrating hole in Infinite Campus, all geared toward the other kid's privacy rights.
You see, the parent gets a copy, if you, you know, if your boy's getting trouble, and they, to the point it's a write-up when you come in, they give you a copy of it, so it can't have the other child's name on it.
But there is a way to do it in this campus.
Right.
You can attach somebody to the incident as a victim, and then the parents can't see it, but you can do that.
Some of it may just be those processes, those systems. The other thing, it sounds like that group is, I don't know how many people you've identified, that's to the total size, but if you need to have working groups or subcommittees, you could divide out, these three members are gonna work on a bullying thing, these three members are gonna work on whatever, and then you don't have to have everybody together, all trying to collaborate on each topic, you could have smaller work groups.
That's good, that's good to know. Because it's pretty, it's a pretty good sized meeting.
It's a pretty good sized meeting.
Did you say we had community members on it?
NEMI is on.
NEMI, I'm sorry.
So our next meeting will be March the twenty-sixth, four thirty here in the board.
Now, Lisa, if you, the one thing is, three of us can't be there together.
No, that's good.
Is that what?
If you did do work groups, you could assign a different board member to be on, like, a work group, even if they're not a member of the master, you know, the bigger committee, you could assign out if somebody was interested in being in a work group or a subcommittee.
Be good.
So you can buy that labor out, you just have to be cautious, like you said, have a three board members part of the same overall committee.
Right.
You could assign out those into, those distinct tasks, discrete tasks on subcommittees or work groups.
That's good to know. And I, I guess, of course, I know everybody wants me to shut up. Starting MTSS, there will, there will be behavior meetings within that as well.
There are already, actually, we have what's called healthy schools meetings once a month. And one of the things we just added since that meeting is we've started looking at trends in school. So we look at overall trends, like what happened last month that was a higher incident rate, or what's a punishment that maybe we overassigned, so we're looking at overall trends, not only, and then specific issues within the school. But that way, we're also using it in the campus to kind of guide those discussions.
Anyone else? Any public comments? Excuse me, item seven, we'll be moving to an executive session for KRS six one point eight one, zero one K meetings, which federal or state law specifically require to be conducted in privacy. Uh, do I hear a motion move? Jan?
Second.
Phillip second, or Tyler second? Vote Lisa? Phillip?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Yes.
There's no report to make. I hear a motion for adjournment. Jan, second. Lisa, both Lisa, yes.
Yes.
Jan.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
And I vote yes.